May I have a motion that we discuss only those five items for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one, personnel matter concerning a committee appointment. And four items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding two specific legal matters requiring legal advice by such counsel. And one matter concerning zoning matter language and one consultation with legal counsel on a zoning matter. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Alright, and now if everyone would stand, we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Clance and then the invocation following it by Councilman East, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Would you like to join us for the invocation, please bow your head at this time. Dear Lord, thank you for our many blessings and for allowing us to come together this evening to conduct the business of our town. We ask for wisdom and guidance in all matters and ask for your continued presence in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
And at this time, we would like to swear in our new chief of police. If our new chief would come forward, please. I'm dropping down here to do it, then okay. Repeat after me.
Okay.
I jill knees.
Jill knees is fine.
Okay. I jill knees, do declare myself as a citizen.
I jill knees, do declare myself as a citizen.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And do solemnly swear.
And do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge and.
And perform.
Perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Pulaski's police chief.
As Pulaski's police chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment. I'm very proud tonight, this young chief is, we have some deep ties, but I'm very proud to be sitting on a council that has hired the first female chief of place. Congratulations.
Thank you. Alright, now are there any modifications to the public session? I don't think there are. Okay, alright, at this time then I'd like to welcome all the guests and the visitors that are here tonight and online. We'll start out with, we'll go to our presentations. Alright, so the first one's gonna be the recognition of the service and contributions of Stevens Funeral Home and the Stevens family to the town of Pulaski, which is Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty eight. Okay, is it possible? Hmm, yeah, it's a lot of reading. No, I got it. I just wanna make sure I got them all. Alright. And may I have those folks from up at Stevens Funeral Home? It's their right chief there. Okay. Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty eight, resolution recognizing the service of Stevens Funeral Home and the Stevens family to the town of Pulaski. Whereas, the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia desires to recognize and commend those businesses of longstanding in the community that have rendered a legacy of service of the highest caliber to the citizens of the town of Pulaski. Sorry. And whereas Stevens Funeral Home has provided mortuary and funeral services to the citizens of the town and served as a cornerstone of the town's business community for a hundred and thirty one years. And whereas, in eighteen ninety, Mr. M.W. Stevens established the family business as Stevens Funeral Home and an annulance service. And was followed in his tradition of service by his sons, Mr. B. Stanley Stevens, and his grandsons, Mr. Robert Stevens. And whereas, since nineteen eighty one, Matt, Skip, and John Stevens have owned and operated the family business being the fourth generation of the Stevens family to do so. And whereas, after more than a century of operation, Stevens Funeral Home passed from the Stevens family to a new owner. Now, therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, sitting in regular session the seventh day of September twenty twenty one, that the council does hereby recognize and commend Stevens Funeral Home for its many years of service to friends, neighbors, and citizens of the town of Pulaski. Further resolved, that the town council extends its deepest thanks and highest appreciation to the individual members of the Stevens family for their steadfast support of the willingness to serve the citizens and their hometown. This resolution is effective upon adoption and will be hereby adopted the seventh day of September twenty twenty one and the duly recorded vote of the town council in the town of Pulaski. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty eight.
Second.
Resolution recognizing the service of Stevens Funeral Home and the Stevens family to the town of Pulaski.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Give each one of you one. Whoever wants to go. Okay, I'll let you come up and then we'll. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Alright, the next presentation is recognition of the life and service of Albert G. Junior Black. Resolution twenty twenty one dash forty four, and if the family and friends of E.G. would like to come up, please. Resolution twenty twenty one dash forty four, a resolution recognizing the life and service of Albert G. E.G. Black Junior. Whereas, the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia wishes to recognize those citizens who have rendered exemplary, wait, can't say it, service to our community. And whereas, Albert G. Black Junior, Junior, a lifetime resident of the town of Pulaski, loved and served his community with many acts of selfless giving and service. And whereas, following service in the U.S. Air Force, Mr. Black attended National Business College, where after graduating, he was proudly employed by Norfolk and Western Railroad for thirty five years. And whereas, after his retirement, Mr. Black served his community as a member of town council for eight years, nineteen ninety two through ninety six, and two thousand through two thousand four, was an active member in the First United Methodist Church, served as a volunteer at the Lewis Yale Hospital Pulaski, and was a certified caregiver to many citizens in the town. And whereas, Junior, as he was called, was widely known for his considerable talents and skills as a chef and a caterer who was greatly sought after for receptions, gatherings, and special events due to his skill in preparing an astonishing variety of dishes and desserts which everyone agreed were absolutely unsurprised. Whereas, after a long life of serving and giving his community, family, and friends, Albert G. Black Junior passed away on August twenty first, twenty twenty one. Now, therefore it be resolved by the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, sitting in regular session the seventh day of September twenty twenty one, that the town council hereby commend the life and service of Albert G. Black Junior for his long service to his family, friends, and community. Be it further resolved, that the town council and the employees of the town of Pulaski extends their deepest condolences to the family and friends of Albert G. Black Junior. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted the seventh day of September twenty twenty one by the duly recorded vote of the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash forty four, a resolution recognizing the life and service of Albert G. Black Junior.
Second.
And then may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to the public hearing section. So, let's see, do the. Okay. So, the first one is item eleven A. It's a public hearing on proposed amendment to Section five point four of the zoning regulations to add Section five point four ten dash two for temporary signage requirements. So, first I'll need a staff report, please.
Good evening, members of council. The town of Pulaski zoning administrator, myself, has proposed adding the aforementioned requirements, Section five point four point ten dash two temporary signage requirements to Section five point four signs of the zoning ordinance. Currently, there is not an appendix to provide description on the requirements for temporary signage by zoning district and land use as there is for permanent signage. These proposed requirements were reviewed and discussed by the planning commission at the June fourteenth meeting, and then the planning commission recommended adoption of these requirements at the August ninth meeting. The temporary signage requirements that are proposed are included in your agenda packet, and the way that they're broken down is basically by zoning district, whether it be residential, business, or industrial, and then also by land use within that district. If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
Was this review spawned in a particular?
So, we are currently going through our comprehensive plan update, and as I came on several months ago, one of the things I initially noticed with our zoning ordinance is there was not any temporary signage requirements to guide my review of temporary signage applications. So, we did have a process for the temporary signage application, but there wasn't really any review of size, location, setbacks for temporary signage. And so, we have, of course, drafted those in collaboration with the New River Valley Regional Commission, who's consulting the plan update process, and then have now, of course, gone through the planning process of adopting those. Really, the conference of plan during that process, we look at any type of zoning issues that may be present in our ordinance and try to amend those to that process, and this is one of those measures.
Just a quick question about the, I mean, I just noticed, just looking for it and noticing, you know, single family, not committed A-frame sandwich sign or portable signs. I mean, these are for, are these purely for just commercial purposes, or do they apply, I'm just, just a hell of a thing.
So, signs in single family could be, let's say, you know, your son played for Cougar football.
Right.
And you wanted to put up a temporary sign for your son saying, "My son is the quarterback of Cougar football."
Right.
You know, that would be a sign that you could put in your yard.
Right, sure.
You know, would fit that. Is that?
Yeah, that's okay. So, would that be covered by the, I mean, would somebody come in and put a permit in?
You'd have to come in and get a temporary signage permit to put that up. And the reason that is, is because let's say you live on a corner lot, and we're really, you know, we would love to have you advertise something on your lot, but you put up something that blocks view for the intersection. Right? And then we didn't go through that process, but drivers are having a hard time at the intersection seeing, you know, vehicles coming in traffic lanes. So, it's just to prevent any type of issues there, signage.
So, if we needed to enforce it, if there wasn't a permit, then we are at least giving people notice that there's a certain requirement supposed to follow. Okay, thank you.
And most of our temporary signage requirements, our temporary signage applications, sorry, come from businesses that would like to first put up a banner before they go and purchase a permanent sign, which often can be costly. And those businesses are allotted a ninety day timeframe to have temporary signage, where they can put a banner on the front of their business, either on the wall or window, that advertises they're open and operational before we require them to take that down and have some form of permanent signage.
But just for clarification, on a personal, on a private homeowner's lawn, this doesn't necessarily come into effect. Unless they put up a ten foot sign that's blocking the intersection, but if you're just talking about a little yard sign that says yard sale, this doesn't apply.
You have some leeway there, particularly with like election signs and stuff like that, that you can put up that we do not regulate. So, it's within reason, yes, sir.
So, nobody has to go get a permit. I just wanna make sure that's clear. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any other questions before we continue on? Okay. Okay, there's two ordinance with the same number. One is to approve, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment, and the other is to not approve it. So, if there's no other questions, can we move on?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty three as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Alright, next we have a public hearing on a request for a special exception for junkyard and automobile graveyard for property at thirty four First Street Northeast. Now, may I have the staff report first, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The town of Pulaski received a request by Good Old Boys Recovery, Agent Kelly Dalton. Mr. Dalton is not able to be with us this evening. His business partner, David Gevis, is with us this evening. Kelly is in New Jersey towing vehicles as a response to the latest hurricane and will be there for several weeks with that disaster relief. They are requesting a special exception for a junkyard and automobile graveyard for property located at thirty four First Street Northeast. As a reminder, the town code defines a junkyard and/or automobile graveyard as any property that has five or more inoperable vehicles. An inoperable vehicle according to our code is a vehicle that does not have current registration or current inspection on the vehicle. This is per Section four point twelve point two dash two, two B, junkyards and automobile graveyards of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, the applicant wants to use the vacant lot at thirty four First Street Northeast to temporarily store towed vehicles. Kelly Dalton and his business partner, David Gevis, who is with us, has mentioned recently founded Good Old Boys Recovery. It's been within the last year or so, and are working to establish themselves in the local towing market. They have been operating without a storage lot in the town of Pulaski, which does limit them in the types of calls they can respond to. According to Mr. Kelly and Mr. Gevis, they do not believe that the lot could store more than fifteen vehicles. They are aware that our zoning ordinance does require the lot to be screened from the adjacent roadway, which would be First Street. A few notes to mention, the property was identified for commercial use in the future land use map of the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. Also, the town engineer was consulted about stormwater runoff, and he stated there would likely not be enough vehicles in the lot to activate necessary mitigation measures, but he did state that the applicants would need to ensure that the vehicles do not leak fluids and/or that any leaked fluids are cleaned up properly, which is the requirement for all vehicle storage locations. We did receive one email related to the case from an agent for the property owner that's located next to the subject parcel. He stated that he would be opposed to this because of his concern related to property values impacted by this operation. As you all are aware, conditions may be imposed as the town council determines to be appropriate as suitable regulations and safeguards for special use requests like this one. The town council is authorized to impose such conditions relating to the use for which a permit is granted as it may be necessary in the public interest, including limiting the duration of a permit, and may require a guarantee or bond to ensure that the conditions imposed are being and will continue to be complied with, and that's according to Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash twenty three zero nine. If you have any further questions for me at this time, I can answer them, and the applicant, as I said, a member of the business is here as well. If you have any questions you'd like to ask him.
Anybody mind if I go first? So, I guess one of the questions is, I mean, I understand that there's the lot next to the building that's currently fenced in, and that's the one that they're intending to use.
Yes, sir.
But the, but the applications for the whole lot, including the building, the alley behind, I mean, if we granted a special use exception as written, that would be for the whole parcel or just a portion of the parcel?
It would be for that vacant lot. I guess technically, you could definitely include in your motion that as a condition to ensure that it's only that vacant lot aspect of the parcel. But that vacant lot is, according to the county real estate office and R.G.I.S., address is thirty four First Street with that tax parcel. But yes, sir, you could definitely condition your motion to be based on that vacant lot, and technically, I guess, if a special request exception is written, it is sorted for the property. So, yes, you're correct in that statement.
And I guess the other question, I don't know if this is you or Mr. Gevis that would answer this, is what's the contractual relationship between Good Old Boys and the property owner as far as lease, option, et cetera?
Just the lease.
Just the lease? And, sorry, it's Mr. Gevis?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. What's the term, is the term of the lease?
We're looking at twelve months right now, and we're hoping to, you know, this is to get us, you know, get our business planted in Pulaski, this is our hometown, and get it going. We don't wanna be there forever just because it's not ideal for us. This is to get, to get our business going and get our roots planted until we can move to a different location that is more suited for us for, to, basically on our side for more storage vehicles and stuff like that, to have more space for our trucks. This is certainly a small, small operation as far as just handling county calls off the interstate. They usually sit there ten to fourteen days and then they go to an option.
Okay, and do you have, have you signed, I'm just sorry, I just wanna make, you're talking to a lawyer, someone in particular. Did you sign the lease yet, or are you going to sign the lease?
We're going to sign the lease when all of this is taken care of.
Okay, and I guess, so you don't, have you looked at the lease yet or anything like that? I guess, I think our concern is, you know, what, long term, what's it gonna look like there in granting a special use exception to the parcel? I mean, that's my concern, is that what it would look like long term in the locations? I'm just trying to understand your relationship to the property owner.
We're not sure, we don't wanna be there more than twelve to eighteen months, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Billy, the owner of the parcel, Mr. Billy Warden, he's very, you know, he's kind of flexible with what he wants to do. We're not, he's not looking to lock in anything long term because possibly in the future, he's gonna wanna sell the property for a different use.
Okay, and you would understand that he might have to relocate if he sold the property?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think those are my questions. Everybody else?
What are the specific requirements for covering? I know you said they understood that, you know, that the fencing would have to be shielded from view, but what are the specific, I guess, requirements of how it would have to be?
There would need to be a black tarp that is attached to the fence along First Street that prevents visibility from the street. And if, you know, for example, another towing operation in the town is in an I-two location, has a black tarp, and at one point this year, a storm or something had come by, blew the black tarp up, and we immediately contacted them and said, you know, can you please correct the issue? So, that's what the intention there is, to block visibility from the adjacent roadway.
Does that include the back of the property facing the railroad?
Technically, it does not include the back of the property. The code of Virginia just mentions the adjacent roadway. The railroad is to the rear and then the train station is to the rear. So, technically, the code of Virginia, you know, we're limited in requiring that on the rear outright, but that could be a condition that you add to the special exception as a reasonable condition.
And I might add that we had intended on, you know, screening both sides of the outside, films by the railroad tracks and the First Street side.
I have a, it's more of a question for you. I really have, I don't wanna discourage you from doing this. I don't wanna do that. So, I really want you, but I really have a heartburn with, you just said any more lots in an area like what we're trying to develop here regarding. We're doing a park across from it, freshwater runoff. I know you're gonna do the best you can do with concealing it. We have the train station there. We have many venues, many venues. And I really have a hard time believing that we're dragging wrecked trucks, wrecked vehicles in and out of there while these venues are going on. But I don't wanna discourage you from not doing business. I just have a heartburn with approving any more of these lots in areas that we're really trying to develop and help our town. That's just my opinion. It's not an actual question, but I just have, I just have a hard time approving stuff like that. And I don't wanna discourage you from not doing, I want you to do business, but that's just my opinion. To me, this is not a good area for that.
But Brady, do you, do you know right offhand how, what the lot width is there?
The lot size, that little vacant lot space is about point one two acres, just that little vacant space.
Do you know what the width is on the front?
I'd say that it's probably about fifty to sixty feet wide.
And as far as, do you have a roll off? Does that want you to?
Yes, we have two roll offs.
So, so have you, have we looked at the, have we looked at any concerns regarding traffic flow? First Street's a very busy street. So, I imagine based on the width of this lot, turning a roll back around, a roll off, around on the lot would be difficult. So, I imagine you'd have to back in and out of the lot.
We have an entrance on the outside as well. On the railroad track side, there's a gate with entrance.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, there'd be a.
And that, oh, so that goes by the old, so there's an entrance beside, along railroad tracks beside the old, one of the old avenues on. And that, oh, so that goes by the old, uh, so there's an entrance beside, along railroad tracks beside the old, one of the old abandoned buildings.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, regarding the comprehensive plan and reviewing that, so this is, and I understand it's, it sounds like a twelve to eighteen month window. Um, this is currently done I-two.
Yes, sir.
Uh, which is, which, you know, has a special exception for that. But our comprehensive plan, which we, we've, we've, uh, almost completed, shows the future use of that as being commercial, which.
Yes, sir, and that's actually in the future land use map that was approved and devised in the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan update process. Um, that that property, that, that area would, uh, in the future be used for commercial purposes. Um, so that's already been established in our future land use.
And, and in the commercial, in the commercial, and you can, I'm just not sure on the commercial zoning, is that a special exception as well?
No, sir. The, the only zoning district that permits, uh, an automobile graveyard or junkyard, which really this storage lot would most likely end up being in some way, shape or form. Due to, as I mentioned earlier, the inoperable vehicle ordinance, um, uh, that's only permitted in the I-two. There's a special exception, of course.
Where do you currently, where do you currently store it?
We don't, and that, that limits our ability to, what we can do as far as the towing industry in the area. As of right now, we're only doing A to B towing.
Where do you keep your trucks?
Uh, I keep them in my house. I have, I have one at my house and then Kevin, Mr. Dalton keeps one at his house as well.
Are we able to even make a time limit on a special use exception or is, is, I just don't even know if that's even possible?
Yes, according to the code of Virginia, you can, um, include a limitation for the duration of a permit. That's a fifteen dash two, uh, dash twenty-three oh nine.
And what can we condition that on? I mean, you know, is it, does it have to be a, a specific time or can it be like for the length of the lease or can it, I mean, I'm just sort of trying to figure out what our?
You could do the length of the lease, um, you know, I think that's up to you guys to consider. Of course, as you all review these, as you all review zoning requests, you have to make sure that you review them in a way to determine if it promotes the general welfare. Is of public necessity and is of good zoning practice. And so one of those, you, you base your conditions based on really those three broad principles that are outlined in the code of Virginia.
Which, which takes me back to my question regarding the comprehensive plan, uh, question and comment. If, if, if we're going from I-two ideally long-term, moving toward commercial. Um, this doesn't fall into that, that long-term vision of where we are. Now, I certainly, um, am always happy to see new business, um, and people come into town and want to do something within the town of Pulaski. I certainly support that. Um, I would raise the question, are, are there potentially better locations? That we, the town, could, could work with these gentlemen and helping them find something, uh, more appropriate, more in line with our long-term vision of what the town can be. Which also meets their goal, uh, which is to have a place to, to, to drop, drop cars that, that may not be so visible. And, you know, right at one of the major in- intersections in the town of Pulaski. So that's just a thought.
We have been working with the applicant. Uh, I cannot, um, speak enough to the professionalism that the applicants have shown through this process. Uh, they had first applied for a business occupancy application for their business, which really started this process. Uh, because at that time, I denied that application as a result to, uh, the need for a special exception before that application could be approved for this property. And they were completely professional. They paid, uh, the, the fee as required by the, uh, request. Um, they did not act, uh, as sometimes happens in violation first and then ask for forgiveness later. They came first and asked for permission and wanted to go through the right channels. And we've been working together to find other, uh, potential locations and have discussed potential properties, um, that, that may suit their interests. Uh, and really what they voiced to me right now is, uh, they just are, are limited being a new business financially. And, um, you know, are just trying to find something now that can really help them kickstart their business to see what they're able to do moving forward. Um, and correct me if I'm speaking it correctly there, Mr. Givas.
No, that's one hundred percent accurate.
Brady, the special exception, does it go with the property or with the applicant?
Uh, the special exception would remain with the applicant is my understanding.
And is the applicant, this company or the property?
The applicant is, uh, uh, Kelly Dalton is the agent listed on the application.
So they have the permission of the property owner to file?
Mm-hmm.
The request for the special exception?
Yes, ma'am.
So should this company leave, if they were approved for the special exception? And were to leave this property, let's say in a year or two years, because they found a better place or a larger place or whatever's needed. That special exception would lapse?
Yes, ma'am. Um, however, I would make sure that that's something that's stated directly by town council.
I have one more question asking. You may have answered, I think, uh, I'm not sure if one of you guys. Is your limitation to just vehicles, you're not, you're not prepared to do big trucks, right?
Absolutely not. Only light, only light duty vehicles.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing section. And if anyone would like to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing section, section, section. And now, do you all have anything else before we move on to that, to approve an order?
I, I would just say, and from the questions that have been asked, I think there's a, you know, there's a somewhat of a general consensus that, you know, and I believe you might even agree with yourself. That it's not necessarily the appropriate, you know, or intended use of this property, not what, you know, the, what was. In the future use map, what, what our hopes are. And there's a lot of work going on currently there ahead in that direction. And so I, I certainly don't think I would be willing to approve the special exception as it is. Uh, but certainly would be interested in seeing what type, you know, types of conditions that could be put on it from a timeframe standpoint. That could ensure that, that, uh, you know, that that, uh, special exemption did not, you know, go beyond a point that slowed our progress. You know, uh, you know, and if there was a way that tho- those conditions could be put in place. To prevent, ensure that in that time period or temporary time period that it wasn't a blight. And then, and then also did not slow the progress of, of that region, you know, uh, moving forward. And I, I certainly would be interested in seeing that. I, I think I'd like to see what that looked like before. I personally would want to make a decision about whether or not it couldn't, you know, could be approved or not approved.
Just a, just a quick question for Mr. Givas. You know, if we say you gotta screen it, you gotta clear out all the junk that's there now. And you're gonna have to move in twelve months from when we approve it, would that make it economical for you?
Yes, because of, for, at our standpoint, it would open our, our business to more revenue to be able to move. Yes, it need, it's, it's jumped up and it's, you know, we started cleaning on it. The pictures now are.
Oh, no, I, I think I've seen it recently. It looks a lot better. So thank you for that.
Uh.
Um, but so I just want to make sure before we go to make, drag you through anything more, that it's, you're even interested if that's the option.
Yes, if we could get, you know, twelve to eighteen months worth of use out of it in that, in that frame. It would open the, the window up to be, to be opened up to the police rotation and be able to respond to wrecks. To help our business financially to find a different location that we may want to, you know, that we wouldn't want to stay long-term.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, it's a good point. I, 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 I do not have an issue if, if, if it's, uh, I think, Mr. Chris said, on a couple of twelve-month period, to get you started. Get you financially, uh, sound as long as, I don't want it to be a permanent hole.
No.
And, and that's all I would ask.
Well, I mean, and I guess maybe the question then is, I mean, no offense, you seem like a, you know, a hard-working young man. But, you know, the issue is that you all go under and there are fifteen cars sitting there. What's the cost is gonna be to remove those vehicles if, you know, something happens, you all move out of state, something like that? I mean, do we, that, that would be a bond, would, would be, would be something that we would, could impose?
You, you could impose a bond on this, on the?
Just, just to sort of like as a, like a clearance cost, that that would be refunded or just not, however it would be figured out, a surety bond sometime? Um.
And most everything that is hauled in from, because it's strictly for police rotation. And most everything that is hauled in is usually, uh, you know, is going to an insurance company.
No, no, I, I understand, but you know, we, one of the things we have to worry about is what happens if, you know. God forbid something terrible happens to you and your partner and you're not around anymore to clean it up. You know, uh, as, you know, sort of, on behalf of the taxpayers, we have to put that bill and would we want to be putting that bill? And so one of the things we would do is have a surety bond that would make it so that if you all didn't clear it off, we would use that money to pay for that operation. So I think that would be one thing we probably want to figure out, would that amount, a reasonable amount for that?
Let me, let me question you on one more thing. I live alone. The vehicles, when you tow, if I correct, it's been a long time since I've walked a wreck. But they're all insurance-type vehicles. They're, they're not gonna be sitting there long. The insurance will kind of get them correct or?
Well, see, and we haul for the insurance auto auctions out on ninety-nine, so I'm kind of on the other side of that, you know, receiving in with the insurance companies. And these cars usually, we tow from Reno to Bristol from different yards. Typically, they don't sit more than, I'm gonna get, put a range at, you know, ten to twenty days at most. That they sit before the insurance company releases them and then the IAA, the insurance auction is calling for them to be taken to their yard to be auctioned off.
They're not parted out?
No.
There's no way, because that's, correct.
They're not parted out at all. The insurance will call for them and then, then either we will or the IAA will send a truck, however it works out. And they will get hauled down there to be auctioned off and sold.
But the special exception currently doesn't specify that type of towing, correct?
It does not specify that. It, it, it just requests for the usage as a?
So it could be?
Tightened up?
Tightened up. It could be used to bring other vehicles in that might not stay. I'm not saying that's your intent. But again, I think the council's trying to find a way to cover themselves. At the same time as to give you, you know, the ability to have the business. But while you say that's your present source for towing, it could change to something else. Unless we specify the time limitation that the vehicle could stay there or other conditions, as you've just described it.
Right, and if, if, say somebody knows liability insurance and it gets towed in off a wreck. And then it's, it, it takes us as a towing company, usually with the DMP, on average of, you know, thirty days to get right, right to. Destruct the vehicle to take it to a salvage yard. And as a towing company, we don't want them sitting on our yard long-term because if they fill up, that, and then we get a call from the police rotation. We're not able to respond and that's, that's money out of our pocket that we're not able to, revenue lost.
Sure.
Because the lot's full. So we have, we didn't have no intention on the vehicle sitting there long-term at all because it's bad for our business as well.
Yeah, I think I'd be less worried about the timeline, vehicle sat there versus a twelve to eighteen month timeline on the permit.
Just one other question. Once you are on the, so the goal is to be on this police rotation. Um, once that happens and you have a space available to do that, what, how quickly do you see that impact from an economics standpoint? Uh, I don't know what the rotation schedule is, if you're in a, if you're in queue with twenty other businesses or ten or five.
It'll do, you know, being in the town and also being within the county, so it's two different rotations, the rotation for the town and the county. Um, but you know, it, it, it kind of depends. But it's a, it's a different type of towing because you get, especially, you know, in the snow, you get a lot of recoveries, people run off the wreck, you know. And no two wrecks are the same, but they, it opens it up to a lot more than picking somebody's car up that needs to be taken to a shop. Versus going out and working a wreck that, you know, sometimes may require two trucks, it requires more work, it requires more labor to be able to get us to that point.
And, and the reason I have a reason for asking that question, and that is, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of struggling a little bit with the eighteen-month period. Um, I, I take special exceptions personally very seriously because I think, uh, we're a town that really needs to, to. You know, hit our zoning hard because our whole goal is to grow the community and, and increase the appearance and improve it. So we can draw on investors and ultimately grow, grow our town. Um, and so that's really my focus. So the reason I ask that, um, i- i- is something less than twelve months? I mean, would, and I may be stretching, but would six months be, be able to, to, to venture out somewhere else?
I wouldn't see six months being feasible on our end because of cleanup required and what needs, the processes to be gone through to be put on rotation. I think when Kevin, Mr. Dalton and myself sat down and put together our plan and how, what we needed to do. We were looking at a twelve to eighteen month window of, of using this and our original plan to be able to move elsewhere. To give us time to find another lot, whether it's leasing or, you know, whatever it may be. But it was something that was available that we ourselves, you know, it's small. And we said, okay, well, you know, if we could get by for a year, we can find, you know, find something different elsewhere. And we're not, we have time to do so, to get on our feet and get established and make a name for ourselves. Um. So I've, I'd say, you know, twelve months would be, we've, we've, we've been working really hard at trying to, you know. Create a customer base and grow the retail side of it. But as far as the police rotation and being on those sides of it, doing long calls, there's a lot more revenue to be made there. To make our business successful.
And we, we certainly want to help with that any way we can in, in a way that's in line with our future plans. So, um, I, I will just say that I would, my first choice would be that we find a more suitable location. That we, the town, work with, uh, this gentleman and his partner to, uh, to, to, to maybe, you know. Help him establish himself someplace that won't have to move. Um, that would be my first choice. Uh, I would be, uh, I, I'd also be interested in understanding how, how will the impact of the large trucks coming out? You know, uh, of, if, if you go in by the train station and you come out on the First Street, that's a pretty heavy, it's a pretty busy intersection. Um, so just entering and exiting, uh, from First Street where it is.
You currently have Thompson Tire that has vehicles that you, I mean, I, I could get that ruined, which is quite something.
Anyway, my perception of it is it's a busy interception, intersection when, you know, when you sit or at the post office, you're trying to cross that intersection. It's, it's pretty hectic sometimes, or vice versa, on, on the First Street, on the other side of the, you know, post office. I, I think we just really need to look at all that and understand what we have and understand what, what it's gonna look like. Um, again, my first choice is that, that, that we find a suitable location. Um, but I think we absolutely have, uh, should help these guys in any way we can to do that, so.
I, I personally don't, I, I think twelve, eighteen, ten months is, is okay, but my question would be that. If the buildings were to sell like in six months, I mean, would, would you have an issue with cleaning it out in that six-month timeframe? Like, would you, if he were, if, uh, Billy Warden were to say, hey, I need you to get out because I sold the building?
And I, and I've talked to Billy about that and, you know, Kevin and I have discussed that. He's willing to give us ample notice before he sells to be able to clear out and we have discussed that, yeah.
But from what I understand, the, the properties are for sale at the moment. So if you were to say, hey, I, I really do need you out in six months, would you be able to handle?
It, it would, I mean, it wouldn't be good for business, but at that point, you, you know, you have to do, you have to do what you have to do. You know, you have to take a good bath and, you know, just reiterate, make a good plan. And at the end of the day, if the property under means it's gone, then that's what we have to do.
Okay, so I, I think tonight, what we would like to do is to see what conditions are applicable, um, from a standpoint that would protect. The public, but at the same time allow you. um, from a standpoint that would protect the public, but at the same time allow you to use it if that's what we deemed fit, so.
So is that a motion to table? I don't know what's the appropriate mechanism for that.
A motion to defer to council to develop the conditions.
Based on our discussions?
Based on our discussions.
On screening, time period, anything else? Ingress, egress?
You mentioned the surety bond.
Oh, and the surety bond, yeah. And, and maybe ask, um, I don't know, Public Works or the police, what would be an appropriate surety bond or clear the law, if, if and when it's.
So just defer to the, um, work session on the twenty first?
I would do that. That's just a motion to table. I think what you've done is explained kind of what you're asking to be done. Practically, you're asking, it sounds like, you're saying, hey, we don't want to make a decision on it tonight. We've talked about it. If you'd like Brady, uh, perhaps work with me to come up with the, the kind of a set of conditions that, uh, that you all, uh, based on what you've discussed, may, may be, uh, something that would meet the middle. Uh, potentially for you guys to make a, kind of approval at the next meeting, just like we see Brady back up at the next meeting, address with the conditions that perhaps the deciding administrator would discuss with the applicant and then. So I would, I would just make that as a motion to table.
Uh, I'm moving table until the September twenty first legislation, legis, legislative session.
Second. Let me have a roll call for that, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan. William. Mr. Dawson.
Hi.
Mr. Reeves.
Hi.
Mr. Reddick.
Hi.
Mr. Claude.
Hi.
Mr. Reeves.
Hi.
Okay, next we have a public, thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thanks, Mr. Reeves. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing concerning a bond issue for the Brookmont project. Um, and I think Mr. Pedago will be doing our staff report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I would just, uh, explain to you all that, um, because we had gone through the appropriate advertising of this public hearing, which requires, uh, two advertisements in the local newspaper. Uh, after doing that, we determined that we are unable to close on the loan until we actually have a construction contract, which will be next summer. But we were advised by bond council to go ahead and hold the public hearing. Uh, so I want to use this opportunity tonight for Bill to give you, um, an update on Brookmont as well as our water system in general, because I think you all know from some previous conversations that we are planning to spend a significant amount of our A R P A money, uh, to address infrastructure issues that we have with both our water and sewer system. So you will not be asked to take action tonight at the end of your public hearing, but you will need to go ahead and have, you know, a public hearing and then close that hearing and then the action will come at some point in the future.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, this person wanted me to give an update on the Brookmont water system. And I was trying to remember, I think it's been about a year since we last talked about it. This person had got on board and talked about a few things and changed some design. Give me the other one, uh, Jordan. That one, there you go. So what you have up there is kind of a depiction of what our plan is going to be. Um, and this Brookmont water line is the northwest portion of our system. Um, almost all the service area is in the county. It's all out of corporate limits. But it's something that we've served for ages and ages. Back in the day, when the P S A was not very big and strong, we had the big utility system. So back in the day, you built tanks, you ran water line. Even other one and three minute customers, it was better to have municipal water, right? Well, what that did now is it created long detention times. And that, when you disinfect with chlorine, causes what's called D B T, disinfection by problems. And those two animals, it's a bunch of acronyms, but T T H M and H eighty five. We are regulated by those and we are under a consent order now with the health department for this area. So that's kind of the overview in a nutshell. The plan before was to build a tank out on Loving Field. It took extensive line work to get the supply there. Um, it really was not, uh, the location was not as high, for front of the tank to be higher. I never felt like it was a good plan. Talked to this person, we both agreed. So basically what we're doing is we're pulling back a new tank right next to our veteran sale tank. So that would be an elevated storage tank. The big thing we're trying to do here is cut down the amount of time that it takes to get from the water plant to the end customer. And the end customer's on Brookmont and that would be the P S A. Right now, it's about eleven days. You can imagine, that's, that's quite a long time. Uh, this new plan will cut that to about a day and a half, two days. So that's the big. Some of the things that is, that is in the plan to reduce the, the, the D B Ts of one with the water age is to optimize T O C removal, the total organic carbons, and that contributes to producing these D B Ts and reduce the amount of chlorine that we use. And it used to be that operators turn chlorine up, it was good, disinfect it, but we found out now that that, that's not a good thing. So some plant upgrades and some operational changes. To get this plan into effect, we're, we're going to have to build a new tank and we're going to have to install about two hundred feet of line to connect some things. When we connect those things, we're going to make one big pressure zone. And we're taking, the two need more tanks out of service, we're taking the Pleasant Hill tank out of service, and we're taking the old veteran sale tank out of service. All of those four tanks need a lot of maintenance. So we're getting rid of those, adding one new glass used to spill tank, which will require zero maintenance. That's a real good thing. That's pretty much it as an overview. Any questions I can answer about the actual Brookmont construction?
I would just add that the important aspect of this, although it's going to cost a little bit more than some of the original projections, it keeps all of the improvements within the town limits. Um, and allows us, as Bill has indicated to you, to remove some antiquated and in much need of repair or replacement, uh, tanks so that our maintenance cost will come down long term. We hope that the estimate is such that it will allow us, with the permission of the Virginia Department of Health, to also make some needed improvements at the water filtration plant. Um, although we have some plans for, uh, those improvements that I think, uh, Bill will be describing, uh, to you. But it did not make a lot of sense to me and to Bill for us to spend a lot of money that we were going to have to pay back long term on improvements, um, in the county as long as we were meeting the consent order requirement of reducing the age on the water that was delivered to them. So we think this is a much better approach, a little bit more costly, but long term will have significant benefits to not only the quality of the water, but to our ongoing expenses as it relates to producing and delivering the water to customers outside of the town limits.
That's correct. Um, we have sent a P S A note and given them, them the opportunity that they want to design this tank at a higher head and a higher volume to maybe serve future customers to amuse, add into their service area, and they could have that opportunity. If they choose to do that, then we will put that as a bid elective and they will pay that cost over and above what we need to get to the customers that we currently have.
And for those of us who don't speak engineering, so a bigger head means just a bigger tank.
Height.
So it just adds, has more volumes of, surface more.
Volume's one tank height and that, that's it. It's pressure to give to you.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, so it's more about pressure than volume. I got you. Excellent.
You need the two.
So you, you need the pressure to push it out further.
You need the pressure, you need the volume.
Got it. Thank you, David, so I asked a question.
Not a problem.
What, what is it that made this change more expensive? I was thinking.
It, it's actually cheaper.
That's why I was, I thought.
Because we, we, we cut out a huge transmission line to get it to Loving Field.
Right.
Which would have no customer involved whatsoever. That would be all.
I thought, I thought, I thought I heard y'all say that it was.
Well, the original estimate for this project of some years ago was a million six, a hundred million eight.
Million eight, I think.
Million eight. Um, but that was in like two thousand and seventeen or eighteen. This has been going on a long time. Uh, so the cost now, uh, and what you have in the public hearing, uh, is a request to have a loan from D R A in the amount of two six and then a grant that would cover another, what is it, six hundred thousand?
I think so.
Or thereabouts for a total of roughly three, three point two million. But we think that that will allow some additional, uh, work to be done over and above the basics that he's showing you here today and will, um, allow us to do improvements at the filtration plant. But that's not part of a consent order.
So the big thing is we're, we're going to go reduce water age big time, going from about eleven days to about a day and a half. At that Brookmont, and that's, that's by doing this. We're getting rid of four bad tanks. The Pleasant Hill tank is getting to the situation that I'm, I'm a little concerned about and you've probably got complaints on it leaking. We patched it, but it, it is in terrible shape. I don't know that it can be rehabbed. So getting rid of that's a good thing.
What do we do with the, I'm just curious, the old tanks, the abandoned tanks? Do they get torn down, disassembled?
Yes, we will grab the bid for scrap metal. And actually, we will see some profit off this.
So somebody will pay us to take them down?
Nice.
Correct. Right? Um, so some of the other things at the plant that we're going to do, we're going to upgrade the polymer feed, which is our quagmire that we use for our primary clutter filter. Um, we may do some operational changes. We may go to twenty-four hour operation. Starting and stopping the pulsator does not work with. It, it, it doesn't like, it likes to run constantly. So we might go to a twenty-four hour shift. Um, some upgrades, the super pulsator, the timer, um, replacing some parts in it. The thing's been in service for thirty seven years. It's worked well, but it needs a few little tune-ups. Um, that's amongst some other things, but basically the plan that the engineering groups come up with, I think is a great plan. And I think it will get us out of these D B T issues from Brookmont. Let's go to create a better pressure zone, go away with some of these little small ones, going to get rid of some tanks. We're getting rid of four pump stations that are really integrated. I think it's a good, a good plan all along. Um, if there's any other questions about that?
We just had one quick question. We're, we're spending a bunch of money upgrading tanks. These are any of the tanks that were included in the original, uh, recent plan? Okay.
They're good ahead of me.
It's a segue, it's a segue, Bill.
It is, it is. So if they are P A funds, um, we sat down and, and really looked at some things we needed to do. And, and, you know, I've worked for the town for almost thirty-three years. Our utility systems have been overlooked. But, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a fact. Um, with that money, we're going to replace the remaining two filters that they've opened. So we, we've done two. We did one we had to do. We did the number one, now there's two left.
And those are on order?
Those, those have been ordered, yes. So that, I mean, it's the same contractor that did the other two. That's going to be about four hundred and fifty-five thousand.
We've saved a little bit of money.
We did, yes. On a scale. We're gonna, you know, when we set up those other two, we set it up for what's called an air scour. And when they backwash the filter, basically blows air through there, helps clean the media and makes the filters perform better. So we're going to make the air, the air scour on all four functional and have the controls and stuff to do all that. We're going to get the guts to go with what we planned for. That's going to be a half a million. Um, we're going to enact a new polymer feed skid and that would be the new chemical and a new way to inject the polymer, which would be much better, not using chlorinated water. Again, getting away from this extra chlorine that you don't need. That's going to be a hundred thousand. And we're going to paint our remaining tanks, five, the mid-major tanks. Bertha Cool Springs, Highland Terrace, Ridge and the Plant. That's inside and out, sandblasting coating, doing repairs as needed. And that's going to be at one, about one point one million.
And that's not been done in the thirty-three years that you've been here, is that correct?
They have not been properly coated. So they have had a useful life, for sure. So that is about two point one five million. There's some other things that are we're doing. That's the line share, the water upgrades that we have to, A R M. Any questions on any of this? Okay. And the last thing is this person kind of wanted me to give you, talked about the water break the other week. So I'd like to discuss that a little bit. If you could go to the other map, Jordan. So that's a map of our system. We have a unique system. Um, if you picture like your tabletop there, that's the main level system. And then we pump through a booster pump up two, and then once again, some, in some places, to boost that pressure, to get to higher elevation, to make more head. There are currently in the system fourteen tanks and eleven pump stations. We have over seventy thou, seventy miles of pipe. That pipe is anything from twelve inch to two inch. It's new, it's old, it's everything. Uh, I think some of this pipe was put in with Stephen's funeral home, it's, or shorted. So, you know, it's, there are parts of it that are very old. And that's not to say that old is not good, but it's a hodgepodge of stuff. So in the main level system, we have the Plant Tank, Berva, Cool Springs and Ridge Avenue. Comes out of the filter plant, goes to those tanks. Then we take it from there and pump it up to another level for certain places. Crest Line, Route Eleven, Draper, Case Knob and Veteran Sale. I didn't name myself a list, I wouldn't leave off anybody. The break that happened the other week was right in front of the train station, as you well know. That's at the lowest part of the system. It was on a tennis line. It's an old cast iron line. Uh, I'm sure it's well over a hundred years old. And let me just kind of describe to you the kind of things that you get when you get there. When I rolled up, there was water coming everywhere. I knew exactly why. Um, there are certain roads in town that are, that were concrete. Route Eleven was a one lane concrete road. Back in the day. There was a couple of the door highway, a section of that's concrete, New Bern Road, sections of that are concrete. What happens when your utility, your water breaks underneath that, it hits the concrete and it goes everywhere. And it makes a cavity. I've seen a cavity on New Bern Road develop half as big as a shrimp. Pressure water is, is, force of water is, is amazing. So when you show up and you try to pick where it's coming from, saw cut the pavement to begin with. Four layers of pavement, four times that section of Washington Avenue has been paved. But think about it, train station, sober point. I've got the first pavement, and, you know, and it just goes on from there. So you cut through the pavement, you dig through four layers of pavement, then you get to this concrete. So you have to take a hover and bust through the concrete. Six inches reinforced. It takes hours just to get to where the break, where you think it is. But then when you dig down, it may be ten feet over. You have to cut that out and break that up and try to get to the pipe. It takes a long time to get to the pipe. And when you get to the pipe, you try to isolate it. We have valves in this town. Back when the system started, somebody came up with the idea and they wanted a, some different things for some reason. So they ordered left-handed valves, which some people will call the sewer valve. It opens the wrong way. Um, that was our standard for the first probably fifty years of, of the system. So when you get on a valve, an old valve, you don't know if you're really opening it or shutting it. Most valves are, don't work. They're old. They've not been operated in a long time. Just digging the, the casing out to get to the valve, takes hours. Just digging the, the casing out to get to the valve, takes hours. It's just a ho- host of problems, and of course, you're doing this at night, you're cranking, you know you're against the clock because the water's leaking. A tennis line can leak all our water fast. Um, and they usually, cast iron will usually split three or four feet. Um, we decided with the valves, you know, that's why we have what's called a Pulaski hybrid. And we have a five-inch steamer. This is trivia for you. You know, most people have a four and a half inch steamer, we have a five-inch steamer. So when we order a hydra, to keep them all the same, so when the fire department goes, I want to call, they can hook up to it. We have to get a special hydra. But, you know, it's just. So, so to dig and, and to make the repair is just not as easy as digging the side of the pipe, digging it up and, and making a patch. It is, there are issues. But I will tell you that the remaining employees that you have in water still are the most dedicated guys I have ever been around. And they work, they don't give up, and they stay after. And that department is very, very shy of people right now. Or currently trying to fill, but they're, those employees, those three or four that you have left in that department are, should really be committed. Uh, I can't say enough about them, I, I really can't. You know, when they work and they're so tired that they fall asleep, it's, you know, it's something. And that's all to keep the water going. We don't like water breaks, we don't like the people to be without water, but it's gonna happen. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I just mentioned the valve issue, because I, I think the fact that we're training our people to work with some of those valves replacements in the future is important.
Yes. So. We have a system that you can insert a valve any line. Um, it's a hydro stop valve. So you can take a live line and you can insert a valve in it. I have seen it done before, I am not a pipe mechanic, nor do I claim to be. Um, I can tell you how it works, but I can't put it in it. We have the equipment, I don't have anybody that's really proficient in doing it. So that's why the valve has been leaking at the intersection for so long, we're waiting to, after the new budget year, the company is coming in and giving us a demonstration, they're actually holding a two-day school, which begins tomorrow. So he will train our employees. And I'm gonna cross-train some of the people that might be involved with, with that. Uh, how to put the valve in, then tomorrow we will go out and insert the valve. Once we can kill that there, then I can replace that valve that's been leaking.
Well, what that means is with that training, and we had to wait a while to get this particular contractor, is that our people will be able to do that in the future.
Yes.
So that we won't have to rely on waiting for a contractor who's in great demand to come deal with that. So it's taken us longer than we would have liked, first to get the money, uh, after the first of July, but then to find a contractor who was willing to do this training. And we're really very, very pleased that people are gonna be able to be trained for, again, another issue that we have to deal with more frequently than we would like. And there are right-handed valves and left-handed valves.
Sure, yes.
You just don't know which one you're coming across.
Any questions?
Which ones are you ordering now?
I ordered the writing close. And, and we've been doing that for a long time, but these very old ones, you know.
Yeah, when you got a hundred-year-old pipe, yeah.
You know, and they're hard to operate, you're always worried about ringing them off and causing them another problem. But, you know, the, the, the water system plant, you know, you, here in the town, we have a very, very good, high quality of water. You know, your raw turbidity, and that's what they measure, and that's a particular matter in, in the water. Your raw turbidity on, usually is so low that it would rival finished water at another place. So, you know, I, the quality of water is good, the system's old, it still functions, i- it's good. You know, to say that you're gonna start digging up and replacing lines, I, I just don't know that that's feasible at all. I don't know how you do that.
I have read somewhere that, that there are processes to like line pipes?
You can pig a line and line it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, some, some of these, maybe some of these bigger, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe that's something to think about for next year is, you know, identify these older, bigger, you know, pipes that are maybe less accessible and decide that cost benefit, you know, lining them is just,
Right.
you know, worth not having to dig through six inches of reinforced concrete, you know, because they're gonna, they're gonna break. They're old enough and, you know.
And, you know, lining is simply the best for sewer, um, you know, the problem with lining is when you get to a valve, then it's not.
Uh.
Go through that, so.
I see, that makes sense.
You know, the other night, when we, when we started digging that, when I, I, I was really worried because we were approaching the railroad track.
Right.
And I don't know if that's been sleeved. Um, if you've ever been on a railroad rideaway with a piece of machinery and had them stop you, it's not a pleasant experience at all. Um, they will let you know that they. Rideaway. Um, so I, I, I was, we were getting close enough to the railroad track that I was beginning to worry a little bit. But it all worked out okay. And, you know, and maybe the vibration of the railroad track right there for however many years is, calls that fatigue? I don't know.
You can, I mean, and you can tell people too, because I've had a lot of people saying, well, you need to replace all your lines. That doesn't work because a new line can break just as easy as a old one.
It could, yes, we have new lines break, plastic lines will break.
So you just never know.
You, you don't, I mean, it's, it's all in the construction, you know. If it settles, you know, freeze fall, shifting of earth usually is what causes it.
I think one of the things that people need to understand is ninety percent of the breaks can come during extreme hot weather or extreme cold weather.
Yes.
If, if you have, uh, 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 days of, uh, four, five, uh, days of ninety degree weather, guaranteed you'll have a water break. The same thing, if you have, uh, um, five or six days of, uh, twenty-degree weather, you're gonna be having a water break. You can bet the farm, you're gonna have a water break.
Yep, there's a lot of truth to that, there is. Okay, anything else I can answer about the water system?
Now, you could, uh, you can relate to your staff, um, that we very much appreciate what they do and, you know, sometimes those guys are, I think, you know, people turn their spigots on, the water's there, so they're kind of the unsung heroes when they, you know, go out and get a break and people don't really, uh, always recognize that, so it's, it's good to know what, you know. I think it's good for them to know that, that they are appreciated.
Uh, will we lay that to them?
Yeah, I mean, I saw that whole picture, that hole, there must have been four or five pipes going this way and that and digging that out. That would take, before I would do today, cutting three or four layers of asphalt and six inches of concrete with rebar, and that's gotta be miserable. Knowing that everybody's, what's going on with the water?
Yeah.
The whole time, you know, you gotta feel that's, that's just a, it's, it's thankless work, but we'd like to thank them.
The other thing that I don't think, uh, the standard or the everyday citizen realizes is that before they can dig, we have to have this utility contact the other utilities and have them mark where those lines are located, so that we know in our process of going to fix a water line, destroy a gas line, you know, or something else. So sometimes people will say, well, you know, we've seen that leak, you know, for the last hour, why aren't they doing something? We have to wait on other people to do their part before we can do ours. And that, again, I think is something that we need to do a better job of making sure the citizens understand.
Yeah, that is state law, we, you know, if, if water is blowing up, we just can't go dig.
It's wise, too.
We, we go in emergency, locate, and there's a certain time period that we have to wait and give the other utilities a chance to locate it.
Okay, we probably took longer than we should have on Brook, Brookmont, but I told Bill that since he didn't have to come to every council meeting, uh, like he used to, that it's been a few extra minutes, uh, sharing with you the more recent experience of that water main break as well as our system and what we're trying to do both short-term and long-term.
I thought he had gotten kind of long-winded.
You thought that was what he was doing?
Really?
Just kidding.
Actually, he did what I told him to do, so you can blame me.
Uh, we, we love that now.
Did we have a public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, so now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone? Any questions? Okay, good. Then we will close the public hearing. And there's no further, if there's no further comments, um, there's no vote required, so we can move on for that. Okay. All right, so now. I think now we'll move on to the, uh, public comments period. And if there's any public comments, I don't have anything. So, right, now we'll move to the consent agenda. If you all would, um, look at the consideration of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one council work session minutes, and once you look at them, if one of you would make a motion to accept.
You, you had a, a public comment, you, you didn't, did you say anything?
Who did I have? And have a public comment.
Public comment group.
Yeah, I ask, and no one, there's no one. And I'll have any slips today.
He was, he was joking with you.
Well, good, because I'm just like, what? All right.
I believe we approve August seven, seventeenth, two thousand point one council work session minutes as written.
Second. All right, and we can have a roll call for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
All right.
Please.
Upstaying.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Hi.
Mr. Plons.
Uh.
Mr. Reese.
Hi.
All right, now we'll move on to resolution, or item fourteen, which is resolution, uh, giving notice to withdraw membership from the Cardinal Criminal Justice Academy, resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two. Um, may I have a staff report on that? I guess then that would be you, Ms. Proctor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, the staff of the police department and I have been looking at, uh, what we think, uh, should be the most appropriate, uh, location for the training of our law enforcement officials. My understanding is that twenty-plus years ago, uh, we were, in fact, uh, members of the regional academy that serves this area and then chose to go with the Cardinal Academy, which is located in Salem, uh, Virginia. Uh, I had the request, uh, to look at that issue and had staff, um, attend, uh, some classes at the local academy, uh, who had been fairly recent graduates of the Cardinal Academy. Uh, they found it to be, you know, more than satisfactory. We certainly avoid the distance traveling, uh, back and forth, and of course, the, the big challenge always Interstate eighty-one uh, for people. And I did meet, along with, at that time, interim, uh, chief Niece, uh, with the officials of the local academy who were very interested in seeing us return, uh, to membership with them. I also talked with the local sheriff, who was encouraging us to consider, uh, moving, uh, to the New River Academy. Um, and candidly, those who attend that academy are the ones that our law enforcement officials interact with on a regular basis as opposed to the line share of the people who go to the Cardinal Academy, which is primarily Reno, Grandin County, Salem, and perhaps, uh, on occasion, Vodotuck County. Uh, the state code does require that if you are going to withdraw your membership from an academy, you'd have to give notice by October the first. Um, um, I think it says an odd number of years even, uh, to be effective July the first of the following year. So, uh, your first item, uh, is a request for authorization to, uh, notify that we wish to withdraw our membership from the Cardinal Academy. And then, uh, your second resolution would have us comply for membership at the New River Criminal Justice Academy. Both of those requiring notification by October the first, with your actually making the change effective July the first. So it is the recommendation of, um, our senior law enforcement officials that we make this move. And I think it is in the best interest of, of our employees that we do so. Be happy to answer the questions if you all like.
I think I just, I, I, and I'm sure, I'm surprised Mr. Radcliffe didn't speak up on this, I know this has been an issue of his for a number of years. Um, but I, I will, but I would like to say this, uh, I'm glad to see this, this taking place, uh, to, to have our officers stay local, um, support our local academy, work with the officers that they'll be working and interacting with those officers that they'll be with for, for, you know, ideally their career or certainly a large part of their career, just makes sense. And so I'm just very pleased to see this. I'll shut up, Jamie, tell you what.
Oh, I, I was thinking, uh, I have been fighting this for years, just never had a town manager that won't pursue it. I just never could understand why we'd be sending our police officer to City Salem, uh, spending our tax money. I just, I just totally get spending our tax money outside of our, uh, town if we could possibly, uh, get by, uh, meals, the traveling, the gas, it's a long, very long day. Uh, when it's all done with D C J S. It's all governed by the same state. You gotta take the same exam, you gotta, so it, it, it's just never made no sense, but I want to commend you for stepping up to the plate which I handled with apps and wood, I, that's why I brought, I need to jump all over it in our new chief of police, it's a new, new time. And she's a graduate of our police academy here. That's something to be proud of. Like, want me to make a motion or some other?
I think you should.
Are there any other questions?
Want me to?
Yeah, I think.
Mr. Brown, make a, a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two.
Say it.
And then, uh, um, the vote, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Hi.
Mr. Reese.
Hi.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Hi.
Mr. Plons.
Uh.
Mr. Reese.
Hi.
All right.
Do you want to do that one, too?
You should do the next one, too.
Do you, I mean, you've done your staff report, so if you want to go ahead and move on to.
Sure, baby. Uh, uh, Mr. Brown, I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-three.
Right. And then may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Hi.
Mr. Plons.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
So now we'll move on to the council comments.
First, before you do that, I may have aired when you asked if there were any adjustments to, um, to modify, um, the agenda. Um, I have, in consultation with the attorney, determined that the council should, um, actually take a public vote on its decision of, I think, a couple, uh, meetings ago to authorize a loan in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, uh, to Steve Critchfield for the purpose of his purchasing the former Jefferson High School building. Um, as I explained to you at the time, the loan would be payable, um, in two years and there, an interest rate of four percent uh, per year with interest payments on the first day of each quarter, that while the loan is outstanding and that the town will place a lien, uh, on the property as collateral. Those are all terms that Mr. Critchfield offered. Uh, I think you know that the county also, um, accepted his proposal with this understanding. And just today, uh, Brady and I had further conversations, uh, with interested parties, uh, on the development of the Jefferson High School, um, as a facility that would, uh, have heavy concentration in workforce development as well as, uh, a relationship hopefully in the future with various colleges at Virginia Tech. So I would just ask for a motion, uh, by the council, uh, authorizing, uh, that loan. Has not, we haven't done anything with it, but his attorney has now, uh, contacted our attorney and asked, uh, for some official documentation through the minutes of the action of the council.
Do you mind if I ask, what's, who's the, is, is it to Mr. Critchfield himself or a specific candidate?
At the time.
I'm just saying, because I know I'm the lawyer on the other side, I want to make sure that the name of the.
And, and actually, I'm not sure if he has, has he identified a specific candidate as a candidate. I know when we discussed it before, it's a, it's an L L C.
It's a what? It's an L L C, but do you want me to make it to an L L C at your discretion, so, you know, so it's appropriate? So, don't we need to make a motion about the pay? So while, while we're waiting for Mr. Reese to find that, uh, make a motion to approve the new pay break schedule?
Paying class. Pay classification.
Pay classification as presented by, uh, the town manager. So that is.
And then may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Clance.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye. I guess for a while, and also we have the, we're presenting the volunteer application for Raxton Cox.
Oh, yeah.
Um, was, uh, interested in being on the architectural review board. And so with his interest, I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty one dash forty five. A resolution appointing Raxton Cox to the architectural review board.
Stay.
And may I have a roll call for that one, I'll step aside.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Hey.
Mr. Clance.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, go back to your question of, uh, Mr. Reese. It's called J, capital J, capital S, Pulaski Property, comma, LLC.
So a motion to approve a loan on the, uh, with the terms as described in this first one to JS Property Pulaski?
Pulaski Property, oh.
Pulaski Property LLC.
Yes, sir.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Clance.
Due to a possible conflict of interest, I have signed it.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
I apologize if I should have brought this up earlier, thank you for your.
All right, now we'll move to the council comments, Mr. Penn, do you have any comments?
Oh, yes. Uh, I've had a lot of, uh, complaints about the, uh, traffic and, uh, you know, the elevator, um, Mul- Mul- Mulhead Lane, the, uh, train pickups in the afternoon. The school doesn't allow the parents to be on the property before three o'clock. So the parents are riding up on Mulhead Lane on both sides of the, uh, the runway. We start at around about two o'clock. And, um, in the case of any emergency, we could we could not get through. So so some of them are hurt out there.
I will ask the police to take a look at that and see what we can do as well as talk with the school system.
Thank you. This is.
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
No comment today.
Mr. Reese?
Uh, I don't have anything, Mr. Penn.
Well, no.
I've got one thing.
Mr. Radcliffe.
I'd like to thank the staff for everything they're doing and, uh, uh, like, uh, Mr. Hall, it's in the audience, uh, tonight, appreciate you coming again, you've really taken a lot of interest. And I think they've found a committee, uh, hopefully they'll be getting with you, uh, uh, if you serve on and for more citizens that take, uh, note like you've done and you understand how it flows, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Clance?
No, I'm sitting.
And Mr. Reese?
No.
I don't have anything either, so let's just move on to the manager's report, please.
Well, I think, uh, our weekly reports that you're getting, uh, clearly indicates that your staff is working hard on a number of activities. I hope that you continue to find that particular document. Of course, I do want to mention that, uh, on the town Facebook page, you may have seen that we had a Boy Scout troop who came in and did some, uh, cleaning up of, uh, the Count Pulaski, uh, park. And there will be some, uh, plantings that will be put there, uh, courtesy of, uh, uh, the mayor's, uh, four boys, uh, business, uh, and we will be doing some other planning. Mr. Radcliffe gave us, um, a long list of things that, uh, he thinks we need to be working on as it pertains to cutting back bushes and trees and overhanging trees. And we, as soon as we can get some of these positions built, we are committed to making sure all of those improvements happen. And, uh, I want to say and reiterate what Bill said about, uh, you have a very dedicated staff, uh, that, uh, worked tireless hours to make sure that, um, in spite of the staff shortage, that we get things done. So if you see them out, if you drive by them when they're working, just give them a wave and say hello. Uh, and that you appreciate them, and that goes a long, long way to keeping them energized, uh, through some of these long hours that they put in. But, um, I'm very pleased, continue to be very pleased with the way the staff has responded to the many changes that we're in the process of making and will continue to make to improve the service that we're giving to our citizens. So thank you for your support, appreciate it.
Okay, so just as a reminder of our future council meetings, uh, September twenty first, twenty twenty one council work session. Close session starts at five P M, public session starts at six thirty. And there being no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned.